Stand in the pledge led by Mr. Jernigan.
I'd ask everybody to bear with me for just a moment. Think about where we live. Think about what's going on in the world today. Do we have reason to offer our strongest pledge to our country today, given our world situation and where we are and what's happening? So please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have our moment of silence, but before we do, I think Mr. Jernigan has something to reflect on about a gentleman that we all know very well.
Sorry to occupy so much of your time, but we lost a county historian a few days ago. I didn't know him seven years ago, but I got to know Mr. Luffel Brown of the Laskasses community as a part of being on the school board. Mr. Brown would come to our meetings early on and he always had something to offer. He was very interested in the Laskasses community, but even greater, he was interested in all of Rutherford County. He was interested in the school system. He'd bring plans for schools, buildings that he had designed. He wanted to talk about it. I got to know him at Hardee's on Memorial. I'd see Mr. Brown there and we'd talk. I'd see him as a person that cared. I see him as a person of interest in our community. And when you find men or women of his caliber, we need to latch on to them and remember them and appreciate them. I don't, maybe Rick and I are the only ones here who know Mr. Brown. I know Don knows him, but he was a good man.
He sure was.
He was a gentleman as far as I'm concerned, and he cared. And I thought that was the greatest compliment that I could ever offer to him was that he cared and he was a gentleman, and I appreciated having had the opportunity to know him. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorsey. And now our moment of silence, and remember Mr. Brown's family in your moment of silence.
Okay, let's see. Number four, approval of the agenda.
Can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Two things with respect to the agenda. The center with volunteer lighting or Excel energy, I've asked, I pulled it. I asked Jeff to go back and look at the lease purchase agreement and make sure it was exactly what we wanted, so I'll just add that back next time. And secondly, had a gentleman call me today, Terry Taylor, and to advise that there was a story on Channel 5 News last night about the masonry class at Oakland High School and their participation in a Habitat home building. And so I asked James to research that, and he found that there was in fact a two or three minute story on Channel 5 News last night, if no one objects, right after visitors. I'd like for us to watch that story on the masonry class at Oakland High School.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, you ready?
Yeah.
Approval of the agenda.
We'll move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Consent agenda.
We'll move.
Second?
Okay.
Any discussion? We had a lengthy discussion Tuesday on that. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Let's see. Okay, ready? All right, next, we have a special presentation, and David Fox, Mid-Coverland District Director's here. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm delighted to be here with you today. Pleased to have a chance to visit briefly with my friend Wayne, who is a colleague of mine on the Board of the Tennessee School Boards Association. I am here tonight representing the TSBA. It is my pleasure to make a presentation to you this evening. Wishing to spotlight outstanding school board performance, the Tennessee School Boards Association created its Board of Distinction Program to recognize the highest standards of performance by boards as a whole. This award, one of TSBA's most prestigious, celebrates the achievements of those boards that have met the challenge of leadership in every area of their board responsibility. To be designated as a Board of Distinction, a school board must meet specific requirements in four key areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. These include such elements as creating five-year plans, reviewing and maintaining their policy manual, participating in TSBA district and state meetings, conducting a self-evaluation, and achieving and maintaining necessary boardsmanship levels for each member. As the requirements are very extensive, not every board qualifies as a Board of Distinction. Your board is among the select few. So on behalf of the Tennessee School Boards Association, I am proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Rutherford County Board of Education. Congratulations to each of you and to the board as a whole.
Thank you. You want to hit that? You go to the board. Dorsey ought to be the one up here. He's really pushed us to do this. Yeah, that'd be good. We don't block anyone. Maybe. Congratulations.
Thank you, David. David's also the chairman of the Edson County School Board, so really pleased to have you.
Well, it's something we should be working on all the time.
Thank you, David.
Okay, number seven. We have another presentation on Read to Succeed. Ms. Ronnie Shaw here. Ronnie is Executive Director of Read to Succeed, which is community literacy. Before you present, I want to, and I sent you an email recently to tell you how much we appreciate what you do. She's done more to promote literacy in the county than anybody can think of, and I can't tell you how grateful we are. Clearly, it's a passion of yours, and you are making a difference helping the school system. Also, I want to apologize. She invited me to the first two spelling bee contests, and fortunately, something came up where I couldn't participate. And now she no longer invites me, and I want to thank you for that, because I'm pretty sure I'd be the first out. Anyway, that said, Ronnie.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the kind words. I do have a passion for what I do. It doesn't even feel like a job on most days, which is really a pleasure. A lot of what makes it a pleasure is getting to work with both of our school systems here in the county, in the libraries, in the chamber, and all the other good folks that I have the opportunity to work with. Nobody can argue with literacy, so it's a nice position to be in. As I've been introduced, I'm Ronnie Shaw. I'm the Executive Director of Read to Succeed. Read to Succeed has been around now for about six and a half years. We promote literacy in Rutherford County. That's what we do. We are a nonprofit. We use a very, very small budget and staffing to get done what we hope is a lot of good. Many of our programs are what we consider our promotional programs, things like Reading the Schools Day, Reading Rally, Unplug and Read, our One Book Initiative, which I'm going to tell you a little bit more about tonight. We have age-specific programs, our sixth-grade spelling bee, our high school arts conference, our family literacy programs, which are award-winning and are all over the county now. Like to do more of those, for sure. And our adult literacy program, where we provide trained tutors to work one-on-one with adult learners. Anyone who works or lives in Rutherford County is welcome to partake of that. We do all this using community volunteers. We use volunteers for everything. You would be surprised what skill you have that you don't know you have, that I will find out you have, and put you to work, as many of you already know. And that's how we get so much done. We also do run the Lonnie O'Neil Family Literacy Center in downtown Murfreesboro, and we do all this, like I said, with our volunteers and with really super-fine collaborations. And I've mentioned some of those folks here, and that list is long. Folks are welcome to go onto our website, which is ReadToSucceed.org, and get details on who our collaborators are, what volunteer opportunities there are, who our funders are, what kind of projects and promotional events we're doing. And I love new ideas, so people should let me know if they come up with some good ones. I also wanted to thank you all for what you regularly do. You probably don't even know this, but regularly, some kind of email will go out to the folks over in your central office where I'm saying, "Hey, we've got an idea. Do you want to do it?" And always, always, your administrators are ready to jump on board and say, "Yes, we want to do this." Is it for the kids? Is it good for the kids? Is it good for the parents? Good for the families? And they will help us make it happen." And I just want to thank you all for that. And loaning us Wayne Blair, who sits on our executive board. Tonight, I wanted to give you just one more minute of information about the soloist. Every year, we, along with MTSU and Limbaugh Library System, and this year Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, choose a title and ask people in the community to read the book. That's all we're doing, just trying to get people to read the book. Maybe there'll be some conversation. Instead of "How about them Vols?", it might be, "Hey, have you read the book?" Or maybe after about "How about them Vols.?" As long as books are in the discussion, we're happy. So what I do each year is go around to the three city councils that meet in Rutherford County, the County Commission, and the city and the county school boards, and I ask you all, as our leaders, to show the community that you are readers too. I bring a copy of the book, which I've done tonight. Oh, look, see how fast it was?
I got the last one, too.
You did? He's quick. I haven't even put it out there. We might have to disqualify you.
That's all right.
Off the block, too early. So yes, I brought a copy. I'd be happy for whoever wants to start it off and then pass it around and enjoy it and know that you're showing the community that literacy matters. So thank you for your time. Are you sure you're not going to fight him over it?
Well, I'll hold off if somebody else wants it.
Why don't you let me be a good example tonight?
That'd be fine.
Mr. Blair will be the good example tonight, but thank you, and Mr. Wise gets it next.
It's been about six months, probably.
It's okay, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Eight.
Thank you.
Spotlight on education. The Fusion Senior Project Course is a capstone for the Fusion Academy Experience at Blackman High School. Senior Project Course has been developed to mix six different career pathway concentrations into one service learning environment. The ultimate goal of the course is to integrate service learning with career pathway experience as students manage and implement a variety of projects throughout the community. Blackman High School teacher Anne Stewart and her students will tell you about this innovative course. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. I brought a few students with me. We have nineteen in the class. The Senior Project Course is an innovative course in that it is driven by the students. The overarching theme of the project was to mix the different pathways within the Fusion Academy into a realistic, multidisciplinary environment that they will work in in the future to create and develop and implement a variety of projects. There are a lot of different things that we do. Among the pathways we work with is marketing, culinary arts, graphic communications, theater arts, radio and TV, web development, journalism and yearbook. So we basically captured anything that has to do with communication within the school. I brought with me tonight a group of students from different pathways to talk with you because they can explain the program with much more interest than you would get from me. I'd like to introduce Laura Ellsworth, who is with the marketing pathway. Erin Browning came in with theater arts. Tyler Whitstone with the journalism pathway, and last but never least, Amy Rivera from a dual pathway. She concentrated in music as well as the yearbook development.
Hi. As Ms. Stewart just stated, my name is Laura Ellsworth, and my core focus throughout high school has been marketing. By the time I graduate, I will have completed five and a half marketing courses. And with a background in marketing, I've developed strong business and communication skills. Some of these skills include writing business plans, conducting professional interviews, advertising, and oral presentations. However, I consider organization and creativity to be some of my weaknesses. With classmates being in various things such as yearbook and theater and culinary arts, my weaknesses are their strengths, and in that way, we make a great team.
Hello, I'm Erin Browning, and as a student of the theater department, I've been equipped with skills such as improvisation, choreography, and skills otherwise, I guess, not usually seen as helpful in a business-type of environment, but maybe the improvisations helped a little bit. Taught me to be quick on my feet, which would help a little bit right now. But I feel like theater has really given me firstly, the appreciation for social interaction. It's given me the confidence I need to lead the class. We were given, we had to face the decision of cutting certain programs from, I guess you would say, our curriculum. We had to decide to do certain things and refuse to do other things. And I had to kind of step up and lead, and I was comfortable in doing that. I was confident in myself enough to do that, and I feel like theater has helped me gain that confidence and has given me creativity that I feel like I can use. I feel like I can be a valuable asset in that way. On the negative side, I've never been in a business class before, so I did not know how to do a business proposal or anything like that, and Ms. Stewart met my first paper with a very, very deep frown. And that wasn't very pleasant, but I've learned a lot of things from being in this type of classroom, something that I had never experienced before, and I think it's a great thing.
Hello, I'm Tyler Whitstone, and I, like Erin, do not have the business, marketing side of the business world. And I am a four-year journalist, worked my way up to the executive editor, which puts me in charge of twenty-four some odd students, and I believe that that has well-equipped me for being able to be in charge and be able to take leadership role in class, like Erin said. And also, a negative, which is filled with positives from other peoples, would be I'm not very good at managing artsy stuff so much and marketing things, and that's why these people will definitely pick up the slack. And so being able to work with people in the same group, get jobs done, is, I feel like, what we're preparing ourselves for the business world.
Hello, my name's Amy Rivera, and as Ms. Stewart so kindly stated, I am a part of the yearbook staff. I'm one of the design editors, and I'm also in band. I'm one of the section leaders. And being in band, I've been able to bring my leadership skills to this class, and it's made compromise as well as putting my thoughts out there much easier. And being on the yearbook staff has made, I'm not really in any marketing classes or business as these other two guys are, and I haven't really been taking any classes in the business-type field, so I don't know much about business. And surprisingly, being in the yearbook staff, we have been working on going out and talking to people, trying to advertise our yearbooks. So I've been able to bring that skill to this class, which has made it so much easier, especially with writing the papers that we've written. And being in band has helped me with not only being a leader, but also with being able to talk in front of a lot of people. Being one of the section leaders, I have about thirty to thirty-four students that I'm in charge of, so that's very stressful. And it's helped me not only to say what I need to say, but also to listen to what other people have to say. And being in senior project has helped me a lot with not only listening to what the other people have to say, but also with taking criticism well. And it's helped me a lot in both of those fields, so.
We spent the bulk of the first twelve weeks in senior project creating a career portfolio, which I brought mine to show you guys. And in this career portfolio, we have various documents. We created personal resumes, and we have college essays, so that'd save us a little bit of time since we're all going to be doing that anyway as seniors. And we created this thing called a brach sheet, where we list our weaknesses and our strengths, our accomplishments, and various other experiences that we've had through work and academics. And our teachers use these as a guide to write recommendation letters for us. And we also spent a good bit of time during the first semester learning how to online blog, and that's an important part of the senior project curriculum because it's things we're going to need to know how to do in college, and we kind of are a step ahead of everybody else knowing how to do that.
About this paper that Laura was talking about, we had to write, I think it was about ten pages, and we had to choose a charity that we each got to decide on. And in this paper, we just talked about, I guess, finances, ways to help with the charity, as well as different, I guess, different ways to bring about fundraising. So that was very important in this paper. And we had to have a ten-minute presentation, which was somewhat stressful, but it got better. And in this presentation, we just talked about our personal ideas about how we thought would be, what we thought would be a good idea, as well as deciding fundraisers, ways to come about raising money for these charities. And we also had to write proposals, and I've never written a proposal before, so that was very interesting, and it's a great learning experience, so.
Personally, I wrote my proposal on youth empowerment through Arts and Humanities. If you have heard about that, it's a new organization that's on the rise and has recently gained a new building on Maple Street on the square. Basically, their mission statement revolves around helping young people ages ten to seventeen experience the Arts and Humanities on a completely new level. They offer classes from philosophy to screen printing to songwriting and everything in between. And they hold shows there. Bands will come and perform. And in a community that usually did not offer this opportunity to young people, there's a lot of bars and places that won't let younger kids in, it really helps to give young kids that chance. And so that's something that's meant a lot to me as I've been, as being in a band and stuff. And so I decided that we could hold a show there and get some community bands to play. And that would basically, we'd basically advertise it through the school to raise awareness about this organization, because I feel like if people simply knew about it, they would be very, very interested. And Laura and I decided that we would combine ours. Her proposal was about the domestic violence program, and what we would do is we would hold this show with about three or four bands, and then between acts, we would have an art auction with art donated by artists that we know and even from the art department at Blackman to help both of those organizations through one event, so.
Finally, I'll tell you about another project that we're doing. Obviously, senior project, you do projects that help in community involvement. One of the things that we're doing is on March thirteenth, in correlation with our drama department and also our, the Blaze Bistro, which is our culinary arts department, we will be having our annual Feed Me Feast, which is an annual theater dinner for a soldier's child, which is a sponsored program for soldiers' children who have died and do not have the parent figure in their homes, obviously, and they will provide birthday presents and birthday parties for children, and that's raising money for that. It's a community involvement. We come out and eat and watch the theater show that night of Little Shop of Horrors. And that's just one of the many projects we'll be doing this spring, and thank you for your time.
The ultimate goal is for the students to work in the same disciplinary teams that they would work in when they're in the business environment. The students who come in from a culinary arts background are the expertise in their area. The marketing students are the expertise in their area. I'm, I am the facilitator, and I do everything I can to stay out of their way. I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions? At this point, we would really like to invite you to join us on March thirteenth, if you have the opportunity.
I want to say another neat, I'm showing my age, another cool activity going on at Blackman will be next Friday. Ms. Vic called and, thank her for calling and inviting me to attend, but they're going to break a Guinness record, the most hugs in an hour, right, Ms. Vic?
Sir?
And to generate funds for the victims in Haiti. Just, Gail, give us a minute summary of what exactly is going to happen next Friday. How many hugs there'll be?
Well, we hope there'll be at least a thousand. The record is seven hundred sixty-five, so we have a teacher who will stand at center court. We've got it kind of organized where the students will line up, and he will beat the record. He will go from two to three o'clock, which is in the middle of our homecoming pep rally. He'll beat the record at that point. Mr. Gill will be there. The mayor will be there as judges. But the whole point is, and it actually aired on Channel Four this morning, and Channel Two's running a story at six right now, to get donations for the victims in Haiti. We're looking for corporate sponsorship, and we've got a T-shirt going. It's $250 to get your business name on the back of the shirt, but I think a lot of people will buy into that, and any donation gets you the shirt. But the hugs for Haiti is just kind of a little gimmick to, and the kids are really excited about it. So what we're challenging them, last year during the tornadoes, Blackman raised $14,000 for, we had seven families affected in our school. So we're challenging them to step up and do the same kind of thing. So we think they will, and it'll be a lot of fun, and Friday's the big day. So if, two o'clock is when the hugs start. If you can come out and watch Mr. Gill judge every, we have to make sure nobody gets hugged twice.
There you go. There you go.
Mr. Johnson can't move from his spot, so he, and so there's all these rules involved, but we think it'll be a lot of fun, and hopefully, we'll raise a lot of money.
Yeah, after some of these school board meetings, I need a thousand hugs. Mr. Blair?
A soldier's child is a very worthwhile project, too. If Mr. Macklin is directing the culinary, whenever you serve, they ought to make a fortune because that is such an amazing program. He's such an amazing teacher.
There's no visitors, so we'll go on to your. Mr. Evans? And again, this was, give us a quick summary of what's taking place, James.
Sure. The masonry students at Oakland High School are helping with two homes for Arts and Humanities. And Channel Five did, or yesterday, did an excellent story about it.
Don't expect to necessarily use everything you're taught, but students at one Rutherford County school are getting a real hands-on education thanks to a charitable organization. but students at one Rutherford County school are getting a real hands-on education thanks to a charitable organization.
We got a whole bunch of them.
It's a cold January day. As these students.
This is the layout for the house we're getting ready to start today.
Students from Rutherford County's Oakland High School.
I think it would be a good learning opportunity for them and it would be good help for us as well.
Are part of the school's masonry class.
Once we get that corner built, then we can start coming both directions around.
Today, they're putting their classroom skills to use.
You actually gotta measure out the boards. It's not just throwing wood down and nailing and nailing.
For Habitat for Humanity.
They're building these wall panels in there, building at school, then their people will come out and help us build the house.
What we were originally wanting to do is build one house. And we were gonna do it ourselves. Well, when we talked to Habitat, they said, "How about doing two houses and we do it together?"
Some of them have some of these kinda skills already from those classes. You know, it's all about muscle, too. You know, lifting the wall panels and setting them in place.
Oh, yeah.
First, we gotta get the people to, um, move the wall where it goes.
Putting the walls in place.
Then we gotta find where the boats are.
The walls were constructed by the students in class.
We can't really see the boat too good.
Bud, moving those walls into place. Isn't as easy. As it sounds.
And so then we gotta just slide it and make sure the boat goes into the hole. And that's the main, that's the main problem.
I'm hoping it works quick.
The house will belong to Jennifer Flippin, who, as a Habitat recipient, had to do work on another house as well.
I put down the yard for somebody's house, painted the doors and stuff.
So how does she feel, knowing that teenagers are constructing her new home?
I really appreciate it. Um, especially whenever they told me that Oakland High School, I was like, "Well, I hope my house don't fall apart."
Well, there was that one problem. With a wall.
The bottom is up top. It ain't got a whole lot of space here to maneuver it.
That's where Tyler comes in. There's word that Tyler's been doing a lot of talking, but not a lot of lifting.
Oh, he's eating them doughnuts, his hand's got all stinky. He didn't wanna get it all over the woods with it.
I was hungry, okay? I ain't ate all morning and I need something to boost my energy.
Doughnuts or not, most of this house will be built with high school help. And their construction work isn't over yet. Another Habitat for Humanity home just across the street is scheduled for construction next week.
I'd like, I'd like to just make a comment in regards to that. Uh, I think you saw the, another example of what our SROs actually do. That's, that's Officer Golf and, uh.
Yep.
I think if I'm not mistaken, he built houses in, uh, Sparta. And, uh, I think he still dabbles, you know, a little bit into it. So, you know, basically, I think he's one of the main, main ones helping along with this thing. So that's, just figured I'd make that point.
Everybody down here have any comments or anything? It's a very worthwhile project. Go ahead, Mr. Gill.
Old business, football and wrestling at Central Magnet School. Uh, one thing Dr. Ash pointed out that we gotta make a decision on is, uh, not only high school, but middle school as well, uh, in particular with football. Quick history, the TWAA Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association has rule in place that requires if you don't offer a particular sanctioned TWAA sport at a school, we have to designate a site for those students to go participate. Uh, or you don't have to. You can just say, "If you go to this school, you don't get an opportunity to participate." And, uh, we appealed that rule and thinking it was grossly unfair. However, they didn't, uh, you know, our appeal didn't have much merit with TWAA and the, the rule remains intact, which again is, if you go to Central Magnet School and you're interested in participating in football or wrestling, you're not able to participate unless we designate a one school in Rutherford County for you to, uh, go, uh, participate in that particular sport. In other words, if you go to Smyrna High or Oakland or Riverdale, you decide you're gonna go to Magnet School, you can't go back to your home school and participate in that sport. So we're here tonight to decide the one to designate a site for both high schoolers and the middle schoolers, or two, uh, just say you're out of luck with respect to participating in football and wrestling. And we had a discussion on this Tuesday night and there was some discussion about designating Eegle. So that's where we are with respect to that issue.
Mr. Hodge?
Uh, as you said, we discussed the other night. I'll make a motion that, I don't think we, you know, we're not gonna have this, these two programs at Central. Uh, and we've got all these others we're gonna be offering. So I'll make a motion that, uh, uh, any of the middle schools or high schools that wanna play football or wrestle, uh, they go do it at Eegle High School or Eegle, well, Eegle School. Cause I mean, middle school and high schools together, uh, providing, they provide their own transportation.
Do we have middle school football at Eegle? I don't believe we do.
I think, does, does Mr. Flat do that?
John, do you know Dr. Ash?
I think, I think they do.
I'm pretty sure they do.
You think they did?
I think they do.
Okay, okay. Any more dis- any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Pose.
Now, this doesn't, this doesn't, uh, deter the board from coming back when the school, when the high school's full over there. If, if something else comes up and there's another issue, I would think they, another board could come back and reevaluate this and look at it again.
Well, over time, you know, as the school fills up, there may be enough kids to fill the team, in which case that would rectify the problem. But that's not in the foreseeable future, so evil it is.
Eleven.
Eleven, we have, uh, as is normally the case with the Board of Education, many projects taking place construction-wise. And Mr. Clardy, uh, who's Assistant Superintendent in charge of construction, engineering, maintenance, will give us an update. Pardon?
They do have middle school football?
Miss, Miss Blant said they do have middle school football.
Whitework Buchanan Middle School. We've had a tough time the last couple months on both of these jobs due to the, uh, below-average, uh, temperature and also now the rain. Uh, but we're making progress on them. Side work has slowed down a little bit due to mud on both jobs. Uh, Whitework Buchanan, uh, we're getting close on site sanitary sewer. The road into the project is, uh, uh, paved with the first couple of paving. Geothermal wells are getting close now. We're actually just forty wells away, uh, forty percent. Uh, there's, uh, four or five, I'm sorry, five of these wings are now dried in. They've got roofing on, uh, metal roof and part of the brick are, are up now at this time. Have some pictures here. This is a picture of the sewer that we're putting in out there at forty-one, just up across from, uh, Jol B. Jackson. We're having to drill this and shoot it. So we're moving, uh, along with that. We're now have moved into this power line at Eastland, putting in, uh, drilling and shooting the rock for sure. Uh, they'll start getting that in before long. The road, uh, into the property has, uh, the base taken down, also the curb on one side of it. Uh, you can see the front of the building, uh, moving along with that, roofing coming on. Uh, this is the drop-off, one of the drop-off areas. Uh, the gem is ready for the steel at this point, the masonry's up on it. Oakland Middle School is about two and a half to three weeks ahead. And as you see in the pictures, uh, it'll be pretty obvious where the differences are. Uh, this is the road, it's fronted, it's jarned. Uh, you can see this wing is bricked, also the, uh, wing on the other side is bricked, uh, now at, uh, Buchanan. Gem here is, uh, doesn't have the roof started on it. But I'm gonna show you an aerial photograph, uh, photograph of this. You'll see that that roof is now started. This site's been a little bit drier due to the shot rock that is there. Here's, uh, a picture taken from the air. We don't require the contractors to take an aerial photo.
I want you, a lot of times we, I hear or read that, you know, we build these Taj Mahal kinda schools with all these columns and tall ceilings and cupelos and all this other stuff. But if you look at that area view, you'll see how over the years we've kinda reduced all the stuff we used to put into them and now the simplicity of the design. You know, basically, it's a straight hall with wings off each hallway. I think, uh, expand on that, Mr. Clardy.
Well, we have also dropped the building envelope on the inside. We've got some of the real free open spaces, uh, lower the ceilings in there to make less volume to heat and cool. We're doing a geothermal. We, we don't have a bunch of fancy cast stones that require maintenance. It's all brick on the outside, all metal on the outside. We got rid of all the drive-in that they were putting on there. Uh, we're putting metal panels on the roof, uh, above the brick on the gem. Uh, we're using metal trusses, uh, all the same-sized trusses, it's every wing on the building. So we get a whole ec- uh, economy, uh, through that. Uh, there's just many, many areas. We get the metal roof on before we have a maintenance-free roof for years and years.
And even though we're doing like the roof and the geothermal, we're still building them cheaper than anyone around.
Yes, there we are. And I have a, uh, little tab at the end of my report that shows a comparison of the cost with surrounding counties, which is very interesting. Uh, this is a, a picture from a different angle and you can see, uh, hitters go just beyond that to the north. Merna High School pool wall, we have, uh, it brought our attention up there. We have a wall failing up there where the pool is. And, uh, we've had an engineering firm to look at it. Uh, at some point, we're gonna have to stabilize it. We've estimated the cost of doing that at seventy-five thousand. Where we have to go in and put some hydraulic piers in under it and also reinforce the wall and attach it at the top. So, once we get a little bit better idea of that, I'll be bringing that forward. I don't know, uh, how that will be financed at this point. The same bid now have not discussed it, but it needs some attention before it, uh, falls out. Riverdale, uh, High School pool filter replacement. We've done a total replacement on that pool down there. Their old system just finally gave out on it. It had, uh, inner tubes and pegs driven into the tanks to keep it from leaking and give it through this season. So, uh, y'all seen that bid come through here a while back. But we just finally got an opportunity to do that when it wasn't in use. Central Magnet School, uh, we have the bid documents complete. We've had the, uh, pre-bid conference. It's out to bid now. We'll be accepting bids on February second here at the office at two o'clock. Uh, a couple wings in the school have been cleared out and we're, we'll be ready to go in there to work and get the bid where we want to get the bid, uh, approved for the board. McFadden, uh, we are currently, uh, the plans approved. They reviewed the plans with the principals today. And we are also pricing out the different, uh, divisions of work. And we're going to bid it also and get a breakdown. We're gonna compare that to whichever is, uh, more cost-effective. Or we handle it or we'll give it to the, the general contractor to handle. Uh, we're making progress on the Oakland High School roof. We're getting fairly close, uh, to completing that. We've had, we've been over there a hundred and thirty-something days, calendar day, and we've only gotten to work forty-one out of, due to the weather. Uh, auxiliary gem painting at Merna, we completed that. Over Christmas break, yes, some of you had completed with that high school. When it was built, some of the areas were, the paint wasn't put on properly or it was put on during freezing weather or something. But we got a big problem in there over the years with paint scaling off. So we're trying to get that, uh, taken care of over Christmas. There's still some other areas that need. Merna Track is completed at this point with resurfacing. Uh, the Merna Track is also complete now with resurfacing. Uh, at the end of December, we had, uh, received sixty-nine hundred forty-four work orders for this, uh, school year in maintenance. And we had completed sixty-six hundred ninety at that time, at the end of December. There's a little chart and that gives a breakdown of what we've done. And I want you to kinda notice roofing there. Uh, there's sixty-eight work orders. A lot of those turn out to be, uh, pipe sweating and different things. But as you can see, our maintenance crew has only had put in, uh, twenty-five hours in on that. So the roofing's getting in, uh, really good shape. Technology, hardware and systems support. We have, uh, by, at the end of December, we had received fifty-five hundred twenty work orders and we had, uh, completed five thousand sixty-five. There's a chart, but that breaks down. Uh, principal's request list, we're making very good progress on that. We have a lot of items that are completed. And we have, uh, several items that are scheduled that will be completed before the, uh, year's out. And I'll just, uh, scan this in to kinda give you an idea of, uh, how this is coming. Um, I, we, there was some discussion in here about classroom projector status. And in two thousand eight September, we, uh, only had about forty-five percent of rooms with projectors in our classrooms. Of course, we don't put them in our classrooms. I think they use some of the larger TV sets that's been removed. Kind of security, big problem by putting in portals. But, uh, in November two thousand nine, we had seventy-two or seventy-three percent of complete. And a large percent of this was due, uh, to the money that, uh, came through from the government, uh, on the stimulus package that, uh, the, the school administrators have chosen to use money for that. So the last time I checked, we still have about two hundred fifty or three hundred to install. And we're working on those. It's quite a chore to get power to all of them and get the cable and stuff in, but we're making a lot of progress on that. Uh, and then I just have a list of other, uh, completed projects. Uh, from, any work from paving parking lots? Uh, from, any work from paving parking lots to restriping, uh, brick coating parking lots to, uh, gym floor replacement, uh, gym floor ceiling, uh, painting down at Oakland and Riverdale, uh, re- rerouting baseball dugouts, uh, and, you know, of course, the Seagull, uh, re-terrified water. And then, uh, Chris, again, I don't know if we've been, uh, rerouting things completed on that. Here is the school cost comparison with surrounding county. A little bit hard to see. Bedford County, uh, completed an elementary, uh, school at a hundred and thirteen dollars. You can see some in Sumner County, it's been built from a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Wilson County, uh, a hundred and twenty-three, a hundred and nineteen. Williamson County, a hundred and forty, uh, a hundred and twenty-three and a hundred and thirty-seven. And those, uh, are with the site included in Williamson County. So, if you look at our site costs, Oakland Middle School, uh, Wentworth, Buchanan, we're at a hundred and four with site on Oakland Middle School. And, uh, Buchanan is one twenty-one with the site and reason, there's a big difference there. We got the high school site included with that and Oakland doesn't have. And so with that, that's the end. Have any questions?
Clardy.
I, I'm wondering about the pool at Smyrna High School. Is it still usable or is it losing water?
It's the end wall, uh, that is counting. It's not the pool, it's the exterior wall.
Exterior wall.
Yes, sir. And, uh, we've had it x-rayed, it's been ruined. And I think that water infiltration problem at the bottom of it, that it's, uh, changed the soil consistent. So the weight has, uh, let it lean in.
Is this an old fill area where it was filled in and built up?
I'm sure that it was some way, but I think it was, the walls on either side, it's just in one area. I feel like the wall was left out. Maybe you get in there and do the pool. They came in after the pool was completed, laid the wall up and didn't put any steel in it. The problem was compounded by a, a drain that wasn't working properly outside. There were water infiltrated and footed.
Well, uh, Mr. Clardy, the principal list's request that you were talking about, uh, that goes all the way back to budget. Uh, is, those are items that the principals requested during the budget, uh, building process?
Yes, last year's budget.
Right, so we continually work on meeting those requests, which are long-term requests then for those principals at this.
Yes, they're usually every year at budget time, uh, they turn in request, uh, equipment and maintenance items. And, um, we evaluate those, uh, kind of put a cost on it. We work it into the maintenance budget. And there's, sometimes we turn them down because they're just out of question to do them. Uh, but we get that list down to the things that, uh, our, from our perspective, we can do. And then we work on them all during the fiscal year. Uh, I believe Mr. Sandbich has sent those requests back out this year already because we're getting ready to start the budget again. And those items that are left over or new requests, we'll go on that and we'll put money in and we'll follow them.
Thank you.
That's one, was that chart about square foot cost, is that online?
Uh, no.
I couldn't find it.
I think we need to blow that up and.
I agree.
Put it on a billboard. I mean, that's pretty darn impressive.
Well.
I, I'd, I'd like to have a copy first, man. We might as well put it somewhere.
And, and you know, remember that was the kind of the foundation for which we got those two middle schools built last year.
Minor commission that we actually.
Yeah, we saved them all that money.
Congratulations on that, everybody concerned. I mean, that's quite an achievement.
I'll get those, uh, talk it off.
Terry.
Just a comment I've got in regards to your work orders. You got, it sort of blows my mind, sixty-nine hundred work orders and you completed, what, sixty-six? How many people is that?
Uh, we have about fifty-three people.
Okay.
And they can, uh, it could be a very minor one or it could be, uh, replacing a compressor. So, we are on an electronic system now through email and principals can go in there or, uh, whoever they designate and turn the work order in. We get it immediately, we print it out and distribute it to the men. Or we may even call and say, hey, we know you're up in this area, will you run by there and take care of this for us? So we, we're always looking for better ways to serve schools.
So how about, uh, in, in regards to technology, what's the ratio on that?
Uh, technology has, uh, there, uh, they were fifty-five hundred or something like that has been turned in. And, uh, they may be a little bit behind, but there's a lot of equipment and things that you just can't carry with you or stock up and keep available. So, they get a little bit farther out because it may take two weeks or thirty days to get a piece of equipment. We have, uh, managed to get a stock of certain items that we know are going to be, you know, we're going to need. But it, uh, we also, a lot of the techs use their own vehicles and turn in mileage. So, we have set up a delivery system now where we can get the parts out and then they're not sitting in their house at night in their car all night long. Uh, so we, we try to address that. It's a very difficult problem with weight on some of the items, but.
I just, I, I guess what amazed me is the numbers you, you're dealing with with, uh, I guess you can say the amount of paper you got.
We have, I think, fifty-three employees over there now that are actually.
Wayne.
I've had some administrators tell me that they have to be careful about calling your office because sometimes you'll come before they're prepared, that you're so quick to respond. So, uh, you know, congratulations on, on great opportunity.
If you don't want it done, don't call.
Don't call.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mr. Gill, number twelve.
Blackman High School Football Field House.
Oh, Rockville Middle.
Pardon me, pardon me. Rockville Middle School Operation Integrity Program request, uh, we're recommending that you approve the request by Principal Barlow for Operation Integrity Program to be implemented at Rockville Middle School. And here to speak to us is Officer Krim.
Yes, sir.
Krim from Rockville. Good.
We've, uh, talked with Mr. Barlow and Mr. Tredway out at, uh, Rockvale Middle, along with Officer Hillis. And they've come and seen how the Operation Integrity Program works at both Central and Smyrna Middle Schools. And they think that it's a, a program that they're very much interested in. They would like to propose to proceed with it. Uh, we are going to man it with our officer out there, Officer Hillis, uh, similar to what we're doing at Smyrna Middle School. And our estimation on the remainder of the year would be ten to fifteen kids. Uh, these would be children who would be, uh, normally remanded, uh, to alternative school placement for behaviors. Uh, it's not for zero tolerance kids. Uh, and it would be not for every one of those kids necessarily. We have to have parent buy-in. Uh, the program, of course, begins with the boot camp itself on a Saturday and then proceeds for, uh, up to forty-five school days, day for day. Uh, this program is no cost to the school board at all. We, uh, we run it completely in-house and it would be contained within Officer Hillis's salary. She has the availability of time to work with the kids on a one-hour-per-day basis. Uh, right now at Central Middle School, we have eleven students that we've intervened and saved from going to, uh, alternative school. I can proudly say that every one of those kids is making good progress. Uh, I see a real reversal in their behaviors and, uh, they're doing well in class. Uh, we have fifteen now at Smyrna Middle, some who just joined us this week. Uh, the ones that are in there, of, of the ten that were in there already, there was, there's one that is not doing real well. The rest are right on board. And I know Ms. Jaeger's very pleased with the way things are going with that. So we'd like to propose to the board to bring that onto Rockvale Middle as the next school for Operation Integrity. Once again, these students are in a uniform, khakis, Operation Integrity tee-shirt, uh, white tennis shoes, strict dress code. And, uh, they do some sort of PT every day.
Have a motion.
I'd like a motion.
Second. Any discussion? I think we're pretty familiar with the program, so all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You got it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Facilities. Blackman High School Football Field House, uh, Principal Gil Vick has requested permission to construct a sixty-foot wide by one-hundred-foot long, pre-engineered metal building on a slab for a football field house at the Blackman High School Sports Complex south of the home side bleachers. The field house will contain a weight room, locker room, coach's office, and will reduce the overcrowding school teams are experiencing since the football team is currently dressing in the athletic locker room along with basketball and soccer two, teams. School currently has approximately ninety-one thousand dollars in its field house fund and plans to fund the balance through a zero percent interest loan from Green Bank and other Booster Club fundraisers. The loan will be paid jointly through football proceeds and the Booster Club. Blackman High School will spout permits and meet all local and state codes and fund all aspects of the building at no cost to the board. Once the planning, uh, once the plans and loan agreements are approved or procured, they will be brought back to the board for final construction approval. And recommend that you approve construction of a sixty-foot by one-hundred-foot pre-engineered metal field house at Blackman High School Sports Complex. Blackman High School will comply with all local and state codes and permitting. The field house will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board and final plans and the loan agreement will be brought back to the board for final approval.
Heard the recommendation. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. B.
Mid-Cumberland Head Start Modular Building, uh, Mr. Tony Savage has requested permission to locate an additional twelve-by-fifty modular building adjacent to the three existing buildings at John Coleman Elementary School. Proposed modular building will be used to provide needed space for the Head Start staff members. All costs and expenses incurred for the project will be paid by Head Start. Doctor Joe Phillips was notified and has no objections and the staff has investigated the location and sees no interference with the existing school facility. Recommend that we approve the location of a twelve-by-fifty modular building on the John Coleman School property adjacent to existing Head Start modulars. All costs and expenses will be paid by Head Start.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Clardy.
I have a question that it, the same thing that I kind of brought up Tuesday night is the county's legal exposure to these additional people that come to this campus. And, and it can be a rather sizable number during a day. Could the county become an additional insured under Head Start's policy, thus protecting the self-insured element that we're exposed to?
I, I'd ask Mr. Reed to address that.
If Mid-Start, if Mid-Cumberland does have an insurance policy for liability purposes, we could be named as an additional insured under their policy.
Is it worth checking to find, to find out? Because it, you know, I'd like to be, I'd like to protect, uh, the county's assets the best we can.
Yeah, I think it'd be worth it, so.
Angel.
It's okay with the board, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Would a hold harmless clause or?
A hold harmless clause is good if they have assets, but if they're insolvent, you don't have a third party to back them up. That's the benefit of having an insurance policy.
Okay. Okay, do we want to go ahead and pass this or do we want to hold it up? See what we find out?
I'd hope you pass it, but.
We've already, we've already made the recommendation and we've already got a second and then a.
I, I called for the vote.
Okay, all right. Do you have a question, Paul?
Well, I, I, with what Ms. McLeod said, I, I would think we probably have a blanket, uh, uh, agreement with Head Start since they already have some buildings at that campus group.
We have since I've been here, yes, sir.
So, we would have.
Okay.
An insurance, uh, paper for John Coleman.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? C.
Seagull High School Covered Press Box Deck. Principal Ken Dolan's request permission to build a covered deck eight foot by thirty-two foot long at Seagull High School Sports Complex to act as a press box to protect workers and audio equipment from weather. Plans have been presented to the Engineering and Construction Department for review. Project will be fully funded by Seagull High School Baseball Booster Club, including permits and no cost to the Rutherford County Board. Recommend that we approve construction of an eight-foot by thirty-two-foot-long covered press box deck at Seagull High School Sports Complex. It will be constructed and fully funded by the Seagull High School Baseball Booster Club and no cost to Rutherford County Board.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financial matters.
Uh, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget, and this is FYI, the, uh, we are quickly approaching developing next year's budget and it's, it's gonna be a tough year. But, uh, the general purpose school cafeteria and capital project budgets are in the very early stages of planning and preparation. The county has approved its budget calendar. The four significant dates for the school board are, on April the twenty-sixth, County Board of Education will honor before this date file with the Finance Department their preliminary request for appropriation. June the fifteenth, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget at the Rutherford County Courthouse at seven PM. June twenty-first, the Board of Education shall honor before this date adjust the line items required by changes made by the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. June twenty-eighth, the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee will present the proposed budget to the county legislative body at nine AM. County's budget calendar is in, in tab. The budget that will be filed with the county by April twenty-sixth, two thousand ten will still be very preliminary since we won't have a May BEP estimate from the state. Back in two thousand two, we did not get a BEP figure until after the budget had been approved. Uh, so that's just FYI and obviously we'll have several budget meetings here ourselves.
Any questions? Okay, B.
Fund one-seventy-seven capital project, McFadden renovation. Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars went to fund balance due to the savings on projects that were completed in fiscal two thousand nine. We are asking that this two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars be budgeted so that the McFadden renovation can be started during two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The total project is estimated to be in the four hundred thousand dollar range. The balance of the funding will be in the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget. This is not a new project. It's been planned all along with Central Magnet School project. Recommend that you amend two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars from the Fund one-seventy-seven fund balance and budget it to McFadden renovation project as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass it.
C, funding amendment and purchase of Jordan House at Eagleville High School. Rutherford County School Board requesting an appraisal of the property at six-twenty-eight Highway ninety-nine, Eagleville, Tennessee, adjacent to Eagleville High School and owned by Nathaniel Jordan Senior. Appraisal has been received and the property appraised at a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Staff has received a letter from Mr. Jordan's agent requesting a purchase price of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we negotiated the price down to a hundred and twenty thousand through Mr. Jordan's agent with an additional closing cost not to exceed four thousand dollars for total cost of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Mr. Jeff Reed, Board Attorney, will reside over the closing. Uh, Eagle Principal Rhonda Holden has been rece- received, uh, requesting the purchase and indicating a number of purposes for which the property can be utilized, including expansion of horticulture, horticulture offices, potting room, possible science room, possible field house site, possible dressing room, coach's office, and parking for the stadium. Uh, funding A, uh, part A, in order to purchase the Jordan property in Eagleville for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, this amendment reallocates fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars from the Maintenance Department at seventy-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars when the function seventy-six, one hundred capital outlay to capital outlay land account. Recommend that you amend fifty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars from the Maintenance Department at seventy-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars when the capital outlay function seventy-six, one hundred for a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand to the capital outlay land account in order to purchase the Jordan property in Eagleville as presented.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Terry.
Haven.
I'm sorry.
Haven't, I'm sorry.
I guess, going back to what I said the other night, it's still disturbing, we're, we're taking money out of the maintenance, uh, the maintenance budget to do this, and I didn't ask a question the other night, why couldn't we take it out of the end of fund balance?
Well, you could, but we, we run the risk of ending fund balance drying up towards the end of the year, since funds, uh, you know, what are we, we'll be fortunate to wind up at three percent, which is what the state requires.
Yes.
Uh, and we do have some expenditures out there. Uh, I don't know what to say beyond that. Mr. Sandvig, you want to expand on that?
I, it's from my observations in going to the commission meetings over the years, when we are able to find the funding within our budgeted expenditures and not go into fund balance, it tends to help get it through the commission. That, that was my other thought.
But.
And Mr. Clardy and I talked about it, and he, he was reasonably comfortable.
I guess reiterate that, uh, I think commission, we've gone to commission to try to get additional money to make all these affairs, and now we're taking money out of the budget. Seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like every time we need money, we always go with the maintenance budget.
No, yeah, without being argument, but I think it's, what, what does scare me is that we have told them that our fund balance is, is off limits right now, that, you know, we can't, we just gotta make ends meet. You know, we may have to amend money for utilities, we might have to amend, uh, money for insurance and some other things towards the end of the school year, so we've told them that we don't want to take anything out of fund balance, and, and to start taking, you know, sixty, seventy thousand here, it, it kind of scares me at the same time. I certainly understand your, uh, you know, your position, but it's gotta come somewhere. We just felt like maintenance might be the place right now.
As long as it, you know, as long as it doesn't cut him short, my main concern.
Sure, sure.
Good point.
And Mr. Clardy was in the loop on the whole, all along.
Brad.
This site has an existing house on it, uh, I, I don't think it was in discussion relative to what we were gonna do with that in the interim. Is it, would it be a situation where it could be, uh, sealed up or, you know, protected, you know, from, uh, either damage or from any liability we might suffer if someone, we're able to go in there?
Well, we'll keep it. It is right in the middle of the campus, so it'll be, it'll have someone around it, uh, most of the time, and, uh, it'll also be locked up. We need to board it up, we will. It depends on how quickly, uh, she, you know, we have thirteen portables out there. I'm sure she can come up with a use for it pretty quickly.
I talked to Mrs. Holton about the usage, and, uh, they're, they're considering using it for, uh, possibly coach's office, uh, some, uh, science labs, so they've, they've already have plans to actually utilize the building immediately, so it, it will be cared for and u- utilized.
Any other discussion? Don?
I, I was just thinking about utilizing it immediately. Uh, what kind of restrictions would be, uh, on using a home like that for school activities? I suspect there would be some.
Well, what we would do, whatever use such, you know, is decided, uh, we would have to get the fire marshal, the outstate fire marshal, to look through it. Um, there's a possibility also that if the septic field is in the backyard on that particular house, but we have access to our sewer treatment plant right just across the parking lot from it, so if we decided to add on to the house, or put another building down there in the backyard, we would have to hook the house on to the sewer. But as long as the fire marshal says it's okay, for instance, we may end up putting up, um, exit lights at the doorways, make, we may have to take some doors off the hinges, those types of things, just to make it, uh, safe from a life safety standpoint, make it usable, and get his blessings on it.
Any other questions? All in favor, let it be known, Ms. N. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Funding Part B, we also request that the GPS fund be reimbursed from Fund One Seventy- Seven Capital Projects for the twenty thousand, two, four hundred and twenty-one dollars in McFadden renovation design fees that have already been paid from Fund One Forty-one Account seventy-six, one hundred, dash, three, nine, nine, so recommend that you request reimbursement to the General Purpose School Fund, from, from Fund One Seventy-Seven Capital Projects, for the twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars in McFadden renovation design fees that have already been paid by the, uh, from Fund One Forty-one Account seventy-six, one hundred, three, nine, nine, and also recommend that you approve the purchase of Nathaniel Jordan Senior Home at six twenty-eight Highway ninety-nine, Eagleville, Tennessee, for a price of a hundred and twenty thousand, and a closing cost not to exceed four thousand, for a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand contingent on County Commission approval of funding.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known, Ms. N. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We just want the recommendations on these.
I think, you might want to explain to the, the people, Mr. Gill, what this is. It's upgrading buses.
Yeah, bus, what's basically taking, taking place here is some of the bus drivers are upgrading their buses and adding seats, and when they do that, uh, they're paid on a seat and mileage rate, so there'll be minimal increase in their, uh, in their salaries. For example, the first one's going from an eighty-nine to a ninety-passenger bus, and that'll increase their pay by a hundred and ninety-six dollars, ninety-five cents for the remainder of the school year. So they're entitled to do that. Matter of fact, we require ninety-seat, big, uh, uh, what do you call them, Mike?
Transit.
Transit, there you go. Uh, buses now, in lieu of some of the smaller ones, so that's what we're doing here.
To approve A through G.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known, Ms. N. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Are we down here on, uh, general discussion? Anyone have anything they need to bring up?
Miss Matthews, what was her first name?
We, we discussed this Tuesday night at some length, and I'm gonna go back to it. I confess there was confusion on my part as far as our motion as relates to Segal Middle School students and their zoning. I think based on that, on Mr. Kelly's motion, I thought those students would be allowed to stay at Segal Middle School and not, that would follow their older brother and sister to, to Segal High School. Uh, I think from our meeting the other night, that the consensus was that I was out in left field all by myself. Maybe Mr. Kelly was there with me, but.
Two of us out there.
And, uh, not understanding true meaning of the, of the, of the motion, and I, uh, you know, we could, there was no way to get it on the agenda tonight, because it would have required a supermajority, since it was not advertised. I think it's worth, uh, our review again. I have, I must confess, I misunderstood. I thought those children were going to stud. But it's the motion that goes, it's, it's not the interpretation.
Uh, anyone else have any comments on this? I, 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 Don, did you have something that you wanted?
Not, not specifically on that.
I, it would not be my recommendation to place it back on the agenda. The Board can, and I don't know what Mr. Gill's, well, I think I know what his is, but, uh, if, if the Board wishes to have it placed on the next agenda, we would have to bring it up in the form of a motion, and we would vote on it.
I, I guess, I mean, I understood the motion, no problem at all, but, uh, you know, I think you're getting back to a situation, you take all these, uh, Kettle kids going out to Buck Canyon, that got siblings going to Oakland High School, why aren't you gonna let them kids go to Oakland Middle School? I think you're getting in the same scenario here. You know, that's just, I think you opened up a can of worms dealing with.
Well, it's, it's the Board's decision, so.
Do we not, Donald, do we not have some similar situations at Christiana?
Well, uh, you know, we have some situations. We have rezoned students from Segal Middle, Christiana Middle, and Rockvale Middle. Uh, and Christiana Middle students are going to Rockvale and to Buck Canyon. Same thing with Rockvale students. Some of those are going into Buck, uh, Whitworth Buchanan School. So it's, it's all tied together. We've got to look at it from a grandfathering situation, it looks, may look. Uh, of course, you know, my position on grandfathering, I'm probably the most lenient on the, on the Board as far as grandfathering and, and, uh, zone exemption, so, but, uh, I, I do think that there's some parallel here.
Go ahead, Don.
From the Brent Mead area, I, we probably are talking about five or six students, that good five, six, seven, eight students that might be involved, but see, when you, what you do for one, you've got to be able to do for all, and that's my greatest concern, is how big does the snowball get? Because if, if I, if I put this motion back on the table and the Board approves it to do so, then we're gonna consider it all, and, and it gets to be very large. Uh, my reading from Tuesday night was that my horse was laying dead in the field, and I'm sitting out there beating it, expecting it to get up. I don't know if the dead horse can arise.
You know, from a standpoint of the number of hours and things that were put in on this zoning, and I, and I realize people, people don't necessarily realize, you know, well, you just send them to this school, you just send them to that school. It's really not that simple. There's an awful lot of work that goes into it, and a lot of discussion. And, you know, I, I, I have no malice toward anyone. I, I, I would like to have them all go to school where they, where they want to go, but the situation becomes, if you, if you do open this back up, and the Board has every right to do so, then you're gonna go back and you're gonna revisit everything, and it won't be just, just these things you're talking about, because there are a lot of people out there that have some other issues that they want to bring back up again, and that gives the opportunity to bring it back up again, and, uh, I, I think that, you know, you may never get the school open if you, if you keep doing, I mean, you could.
We got, uh, we're in a position now, we have an idea what the numbers are based on zoning action taken last month. Matter of fact, Ms. Barnes has been into every one of the schools impacted by the, uh, by the rezoning, and on probably Monday of next week, we're gonna send out letters to teachers advising them where they're being transferred to. Uh, in an effort to be fair to them, we gave them their first choice and second choice, and almost in every case, we were able to grant them their first choice. Uh, obviously, if they want to be there, they'd probably be a bit more effective employees, so I, you know, that said, I, I don't want to juggle numbers too much and start impacting, you know, five students probably doesn't matter, but twenty or twenty-five could impact a mini school, and, you know, we've signed four to some mini schools, five to some mini schools pursuant to what we feel like the numbers are gonna be. Uh, like I said, we're sending out letters. I believe we agreed Monday that they'd go out. So, I hope you be conscientious of that.
Yeah, when, when we talk about children being, and I don't want to get too far in it, but you talk about children being in different schools, uh, Ms. Jergen was down in Smyrna, you could conceivably, at the time when you were down there, you could conceivably have, if you had enough children, you could have them in five different schools at the same time. Is that not possible, Ms. Jergen? You could have had them in Thurman Francis, you could have had them in Smyrna West, you could have had them in David Urie, you could have had them in, uh, Smyrna Primary, and in the middle school, all at the same time, if you had that many children and that much difference. So it's not unique. It's not unique to have a child in two schools.
My own family experience, we had, I had, I have four children and had children in three different schools, right here in Marcus Parish, so, no, it's not new, but, uh, you'd like to try to be able to drive to one location and have your children serviced by schools that are in that location. And that, that's the dilemma I see for the parents that, in the, in the Brent Mead area. I, I don't know enough about the situation that Donald speaks of as far as the Whitworth, Buck Canyon rezoning.
Donald.
I know, I'm waiting, go ahead, Don.
Of course, we didn't change the elementary zones, uh, and, and I think that was probably, I, I had reservations about that, but, uh, you know, by not changing the elementary zone, we did put some people in the situation where that they, they've been able to drive to Rockvale Elementary and to, uh, uh, Rockvale Middle School, and now that might not be the case, and it might not be the case for Christiana Middle School. Uh, so, but, uh, more than that, uh, you know, we sat here last year, and we, we practically grandfathered the whole school of Riverdale to Black, uh, and, you know, to an eighth grader that's been in a middle school for two years, it, it's, it's a pretty good change for them too. Uh, and if, if we're, if we're not looking at grandfathering an area, maybe we should look at just that grade level that's affected. Or, maybe if we want to, or are we going to take the position, is this the beginning where that grandfathering and zone exemptions are a dead issue? Because if, you know, we've grandfathered.
But we did, we did do some grandfathering, so that's.
Yeah, kids.
It, it wouldn't necessarily be a dead issue, but we, we have done some grandfathering. And we've done a lot in the past. We've done grandfathering.
Yeah, we've done a lot.
And, and another Board may change the whole thing.
Well, we did allow the Segal High School students to remain at, at Segal High School until they graduate.
We, we allowed, Ms. Jergen, you and I, allowed Brent Mead to stay seven years, six or seven years. I mean, we've been more than fair, I think, in the, in, in those instances, and, uh.
But, but I'm empathetic to the.
I understand. I am too.
The parent wants to drop their child off at the middle school and drop their child off at the high school, or older brother or sister be able to take.
Let's, let's, let's put it up. If the Board wants to put it back on the agenda, make a motion, and we'll, we'll vote and see what happens.
But I'm gonna move, we put it back on the agenda.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? Call it all, Ms. Mike.
Mr. Kelly, you say?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, if you was.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Rex Burns?
No.
Mr. Hodge?
No.
Mr. Donald Strangen?
Yes.
Mr. Doris Strangen?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
No.
Brad.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we had a, a bus driver and owner for thirty-five years in the system died, uh, this week, uh, and I can't think the first name of somebody, Ms. Matthews, I believe?
Sue.
Huh?
Sue.
Yeah, that's right. And, uh, so, uh, just might remember the family. I think the visitation is tomorrow, I believe.
Thank you for bringing that up, Brad. Anything else? All minds at ease. Jergen.